After your weekend?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I had a notice too. But anyway, um, we have a special guest here this morning and his name is Cardale Patillo Junior. Uh, well rather, uh, Reverend Cardale Patillo Junior. And he is the chairman of the Portsmouth School Board. And we thought we were having on since this is July and you have a lot of graduations going on.
It's June, James.
Yes.
It's June.
What did I say?
It's July.
Oh, okay. Well, you know, I'm rushing it, you know, I don't know. Anyway, thanks for that clip. That's why we have two other hosts. July and graduation month for all the high schools in the city of Portsmouth. And we want to have the chairman on. Uh, let's tell you a little bit about him, a graduate of I C Norcom, Norfolk State University, Computer Science. The Liberty University. Uh, M A Pastor Counseling, Virginia Union University. Samuel D. Whit Proctor School of Theology, Master of Divinity. And at this time, I think you are the Executive Director and C E O at the Mao High Kids and Community Development Incorporated. Am I correct?
That's correct.
God, is that connected with the STOP program or?
Uh, no, it's not connected with the STOP program, but we do, uh, manage the HESSTAR grant for the city of Virginia Beach.
Oh, okay. Well, we have, uh, Mr. Patillo here with us this morning, Portsmouth School Board, and welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for having me. I appreciate the invitation.
And before we start, I think we've dedicated this month to, we want to recognize students throughout the city. Uh, during our broadcast, and we have one this morning, Leah, if you will.
Yes, yes. Uh, once again, good morning, Mr. Patillo. So good to have you here this morning. Uh, this month, the Portsmouth Coffee Talk is extremely happy to say hats off to all twenty twenty-one graduates. Whether you are earning a diploma or a program certificate, your hard work deserves some warm, thoughtful words of recognition and encouragement. Portsmouth Coffee Talk would like to salute our first student during this graduation season. We are happy to salute Mr. Miles Hunt. Miles' parents are Ed- Edric and Christina Hunt. He attends Churchland High School. His favorite subject is anything history related. And some of the school activities that he's been a part of are the Latin Latin Honor Society, History Honor Society. This, uh, foundation. Black Theater, Black, I'm sorry, Black Trucker Union and more. As to, well, let me do this right. As to community activities, he's the student representative to the Portsmouth City School Board. A charter member of the state superintendent's African American Superintendent Advisory Committee. Former captain of the Portsmouth Police Explorers, et cetera. He will be attending Howard University with a major in political science. Portsmouth Coffee Talk congratulates you, Miles, on all of your achievements and on your graduation. And we wish you best wishes for your next adventure. Congratulations, Miles Hunt, our first student to be honored during the month of June. And congratulations once again to all of the graduates of the Portsmouth Public School System.
Yes, indeed. And, and you know, Miles is a part of a family of youth that have been very involved. All of them went to Churchland and they were involved, starting with Marquis Hunt. It was involved while he was in high school, as I stated here. I think we honored him, uh, on one of our shows.
We did, on one of our earlier shows.
I remember him approaching city council when he was a junior at, at Churchland, you know. And I think his sister was, uh, one of the liaisons for the school board as well. She was an alternate.
Right.
Uh, and she's in college now. And then Miles came along and, and sort of followed suit. And each one of our, of them are individualists, but they are very concerned about their community already. Which makes me, uh, sort of think about the future and feel good about the future when we have, uh, youngsters like that coming through our school system. And, uh, hopefully wherever they go and matriculate, they come back and, and contribute to, contribute to the city of Portsmouth. But wherever they go, we're gonna be proud of them. So let's give a, a coffee cup salute to, to Miles Hunt.
Miles Hunt, salute, Miles.
Lou.
Salute to you, Miles. Thank you. We appreciate that. And I forgot to mention also, let's add this to it because. Reverend Patillo is a member of Omega Psi Phi fraternity. And I always like to mention, uh, those, the ones that are members of the fraternities or the sororities. Because they do such work in the communities, such good work in the communities. After their college days, they continue on with their service. And I think it starts in college and they continue on. So, uh, thank you. Thank you for what you do there. And, uh, I was joking with him earlier, you know, it's early. And one way to get a, a Mago up is play Atomic Dog, right?
Just moving.
Yeah, that makes you move. Yeah, but thanks. Anyway, uh, let's still get started. Well, let's get started with the graduation of. Just give out some dates for when the graduation is, uh, for all the schools. Um, are they gonna be, I, I looked it up, I think last time they had the graduations. Each school had them separately, but, uh, they were at O D U, if I'm not mistaken, and that'd be the same.
Yeah, and, and thank you again for having me. And thank you all again for, uh, continuing to keep the community informed. Uh, with issues that are happening, especially within the school division. You all, uh, keeping informed when it comes to budget season and what we have going on. And I really wanna thank you for that and Miss Stiff. For your work, uh, personally inside the schools, but the dare program, uh, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, the graduations, we were gonna have them originally in the stadium at O D U. But since the governor relaxed the restrictions, they're not gonna be inside the Chartway Arena, uh, O D U. On June the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, in a couple of weeks, an exciting time. Uh, we're still gonna keep all mitigation, uh, procedures in place. So it's gonna be a long day because we're gonna do, uh, deep cleaning between each ceremony. So, uh, they'll start out at ten o'clock with Churchland High School. Then at one thirty with I C Norcom High School. And then at six o'clock with Wilson, Woodrow Wilson High School. So that's gonna be the schedule, uh, for that day. And we were able to still do the ten tickets per family. So, um, that was in place when that first, we originally had up between four and six. So we're able to put that back in place as well. So we're excited. Um, it's an exciting time for our young people and for our families. And really for all of us, it's always great to see young people achieve their next milestone.
Exactly.
Yes, yes, yes.
And Cardale, will they be streaming it live as well or recording it for the people that want to? The, the grandparents, I mean, whether uncles and cousins that wanna watch it as well?
Yes, sir. Our I T department now, they're working with Chartway Arena to make sure we can't live stream the graduation this year.
Very good.
Good.
Well, Cardale, you came on to the school board in two thousand fourteen, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So, and you, uh, I guess this is your second, third term?
Second term.
Second term? And, uh, before the other host chime in, I wanna just bring up the budget. And, and this is one of the years, you've been on there a while, and this is one of the years where you, you had, uh, good cooperation between the two. Main bodies of the city of Portsmouth, that, that'd be city council and the school board. Uh, in the past, there've been some issues in trying to, to agree on, on what kind of fund this should be given to the school. And this year, didn't have that issue. Uh, I think everything that, uh, uh, Dr. Bracy asked for, that, that you got. Which is.
Yeah, yeah. This was the, the first year in the last five years, I believe, uh, that we didn't have to. Uh, you know, I, I like to use the word haggle, but haggle to try to get, uh, funding for the school division. And, and during the process, I asked the Bracy, I said, make sure you're, uh, you're aggressive and progressive. Uh, with your budget this year, make sure you ask for everything we need. And if we fall short, we fall short. But, uh, for too many years, we, we, we haven't been able to, uh, get the funding that was needed to, to, to provide students all the resources that's, that's needed for them and for teachers. So with the budget this year, it was, I believe, almost a eight million dollar increase. Um, uh, in total, six million, I believe, increased from the city. From the, from the previous year.
I guess that means elections matter, right?
Absolutely. And, and I'll admit, uh, the members of city council have been very, uh, open. Uh, their, their communication has been amazing, uh, since I've become chair. Uh, I've heard from multiple council members at least two or three times, uh, before the budget process ended. And that's refreshing.
But you know, that is so important. And like you said, for so many years, there's been such contention between the, um, city council and the school board. And I think that that comes from leadership. Leadership on both parts. It makes a difference who you have in the leadership roles. And the fact that they're willing to work together for a change, come together to come with an agreement instead of constantly fighting each other. So it's, it's really good that we don't have to go down to city council to, to try to sway anyone to do the right thing about the students. Because the kid, the children are our leaders for tomorrow. And it's important that we do all that we can do to get them the best education that we possibly can. Now, in looking at that, Cardale, I know that there are citizens in the community who are concerned about, uh, vocational education. Uh, what is happening is a superintendent looking at vocational education? And what plans do you all have for vocational education?
Absolutely. That, that's a great question. Um, when I became chair in January, uh, the top of my list for leadership were, uh, vocational education. And also, of course, uh, budget needs and teacher salaries. Um, I've refor- I re-formatted our Career Technology Education Committee, and I placed new members on it. So, um, Ms. Schumate and Ms. Edmonds Thomas, they're on our committee now.
That's a good team.
And they have done a great job. We've already been in contact with Department of Labor. And we're working a program now, putting a program now together to not only expand the class offerings. But to also offer jobs and internships along with those class offerings through the Department of Labor. So they have a program where they're able to, um, connect us with local businesses in our area. Uh, something that'd be coming to the area. And how we can actually establish that program to get internships and jobs to students who are also, uh, taking the educational offerings. Uh, we also, we have a goal to build a C T facility. Um, minute, I'm sure all of you remember, um, maybe about thirty years ago, I C Norcom High School had many offerings, right?
Yes.
From auto shop to, uh, like Coach Terry taught with, uh, with shop and all those things that we offer right in the campus. So I believe now, uh, we, we do many offerings through Toward Community College, but there's limited space.
Mm-hmm.
And also with the limited space, you know, for some classes, students have to have the ability to already pass. Uh, entrance exam to get into those tests. So for the students who really, in my opinion, need those programs, they're unable to take them. So that, so by bringing them back, let's say, home to Portsmouth Public Schools, we can offer them ourselves. You know, it, it would make the offerings, uh, more accessible to all of our students, especially those that really need them. Uh, I mentor students in directions, uh, alternative program. Those who's not interested in going to college.
Mm-hmm.
But I believe it's our responsibility to make sure they can still be productive citizens and take care of their families. So we, we must expand C T. And I believe the best way to do it would be to build a C T center as well.
That would be wonderful.
Hmm. How about the funding for that? What, what, and would that be, what would you think about putting it? You know, I know this is far off during the, uh, your planning process, but where would you put it?
Uh, I'm really not sure where it would be put or if we'll be able to renovate one of the buildings we're no longer using, uh, for educational offerings. Uh, we do have a couple of those buildings available now. As far as the funding, we would definitely help from the city, but we're working with the Department of Labor and some special program that they have. And, you know, we're gonna keep pushing it and see what happens. It's never been pushed before like this. So, uh, we're already seeing, uh, great enroles with it. So I'm, I'm very hopeful.
Yeah, probably a federal grant was what, what is a way I would do it is have one of your staffers write up federal grant and have a feder- you know, federal will do it. You know, and have them earmark it.
Yeah, grant funding is definitely the, the primary role we're taking for that.
Yes, yes.
A projection as to when you would like to try to implement these programs?
Uh, of course, it would be dependent, depend on planning and funding. And, uh, it will also take, um, other departments within the city coming together to make some things happen. But, uh, we're actually looking and we're, we're having discussions now, I will say. And, uh, the way is moving, we should be able to make some type of comment or remarks on it, uh, within the near future. May hopefully later this year, I'm thinking, on, on what our, our, our plans are and what we need help with. Cause I believe it would take citizen input as well and, and also, um, uh, citizens physically. Uh, to help us and to be present to make some of these things happen as well, especially when it comes to attending city council meetings and board meetings. And maybe even lobbying some of our, our state legislative representatives.
Mm-hmm. Cardale, you, you talked about the eight million dollar, uh, increase in, in the, in the budget. So that sets a new, and I'd say that sets a new floor. So where does the eight million dollars and the new floor set us out as far as, uh, and you look at, uh, uh. Uh, statistics or matrices for teacher salaries in the region and also cost per student for education?
Yeah, it's, uh, it, it gives us a new floor, uh, but, but we're playing catch up. Uh, five point five million of the eight that were, that was increased went to teacher salaries.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we were able to give our teachers, or not teachers, all staff, uh, four percent raise. Top of the two percent we gave last year. And, uh, we're proud of that because no other school division in the area, in the, in the, in the local seven five seven area gave a raise last year during the pandemic. Uh, we were able to give, give our, our, our staff two percent raise last year, additional four percent this year. But not only that, within the increase, um, that included tuition, uh, so we can increase enrollment with first college and early college programs. Uh, we also increased, uh, the tuition, um, for C sep programming. Uh, we also increased the tuition for additional support services that were needed within our school division. When you compared us to Suffolk and other local school divisions, there were different resource positions in place that Portsmouth has never had. So we were able to implement those names such as testing coordinators. That takes the pressure off of staff who are already teaching classes every day. They actually be testing coordinators for the division as well. So, uh, we were able to implement that, implement, um, um, other positions within gifted and talented, um, uh, music teachers. So instead of three schools having to share one music teacher, uh, we increased our, our music. So things of that sort that we should have done quite a few years ago, we're just catching up on now. So with that being our floor, it really is the floor. And we, we still have more to catch up on. So I don't want, uh, the city or the school division to get comfortable where we are now because, uh, we definitely have a lot more to do.
Well, and that's why, this one reason, excuse me, uh, that's one reason I use that, that, that word, the floor, the new floor.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, and I also think that you, you also putting an increase in counselors, am I? You know, with this, with this pandemic that the kids have been through, there's been a lot of trauma. And I know one counselor per school sometimes is a bit too much. So what, how are you dividing these counselors up there? I know more counselors are going into some schools. Are you looking at a certain number to determine how many counselors you would have in each school?
It was the state actually, um, with the funding they, they, they passed down to the school divisions. They established the, the ratio with the number of students per counselor they would like to see. Before we started increasing the counselors, you were looking at about, on an average of six hundred students per Gaddis counselor.
Oh, that's too many.
Right. So, uh, again, but the, those, those were, uh, issues that have been in place for years. And, and because that counselor is so important, not just from an emotional and social aspect, when it comes time to preparing our kids for college. And, and choosing your classes, make sure you're on the correct career path and educational path, uh, counselors are important for that.
Very important.
If you only have one counselor for six hundred students, uh, imagine the toil that's putting on our students and our parents.
Mm-hmm.
Try to figure out what path is the correct path for my child to be on, especially when, you know, I didn't take that path as a, as a student.
Mm-hmm.
So I really, in most cases, I don't know what to do or how to make it happen. So counselors are important with that. And yes, you're correct, especially with the trauma that the pandemic has caused. Uh, Portsmouth, we created our own mental health, uh, online platform this year. And that did wonders. And we were able to, to get cameo appearances by, by different celebrities, such as the entertainer Anthony Anderson. Uh, to talk about the importance of mental health. And, and we put people in place and counselors in place for our students and our parents to call and speak to someone if they needed someone to speak with. So definitely the increase in counselors was important also for the school division.
That's question, James. Just one more question. I think the greatest thing that Portsmouth has done has been putting the parent liaisons into school. I have to give a shout out to Ms. Stills and, and, um, Ms., um.
Hills.
No, I'm, uh, Ms. Stills Supervisor. Well, I'm blanking, as well as I know her. But anyway, to, to the group over there at Emily Spong. They are doing an amazing job in bringing families together, bringing parents into the school, getting parents involved in the school. And a lot of creativity is going on there, uh, in that division. So we really have to give a shout out to the parent liaisons. And I know that they have kept the, uh, sheriff's department extremely busy, but it's been a great busy. So I want to give a shout out to all of the parent liaisons out there and the great jobs that they're doing in each of the schools in Portsmouth. Let's give them a round of applause.
Did miss, uh, yeah, that, that's ran by Title One Department and Ms. Renee Hill.
Renee Hills. Renee, please forgive me, Renee, cause I know they listen. Forgive me, Renee, is a senior moment. Or to my head and not to my heart, okay?
And, and that's one department that we're also looking at because, uh, our Title One Department, uh, Renee, she has a great staff with Ms. Stills.
Yes, she does.
But you know, um, and most school divisions, Title One, they have many layers.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, of staff in there. And for that, with us to have a small department, they get a lot done.
Mm-hmm.
Would it be a small department?
They really do.
The parent liaisons, they, they go to homes, uh, of our students, they're in constant contact with the parents. They're also formulating community partnerships to get in volunteers in the schools you spoke of. Uh, they do an amazing job for us.
They really do.
Probably one of the best additions we made, I agree with you, in the, in the last two or three years.
Yes.
Yeah, Leah, Leah, when, whenever you have one of those brain freezes.
Yes.
Oh, it always hurts me.
I remember that. I got my glasses right. I need to keep them on there, cause those brain fogs are coming pretty frequently here.
Yes, indeed. But, uh, Cardale, uh, and you were talking about the counselors and, and also it's important to have a, a, a pretty proper, uh. Teacher to student ratio. And, and as we talk about, you know, the, the mental health, the counselors, the teachers' ratio being the lowest it can be. Because when I think about some of the, the crime out there and some of those students that we might see on these, these social media videos, shooting those guns. Have come through the system, the school system. And, and, and the school, our school system is, is just one, a part of, uh, the collective effort we need to have to. Sort of try to curtail that and catch those kids earlier before they get into a life of crime. So, uh, we hopefully, as we move forward, that's, that's a part of it too. I, I wanna go back to the graduation, uh, right quick because wanna ask a question we got on, uh. On our Facebook Live here from Wesley Van, one of our, uh, I C Norcom nineteen seventy-one class members. He, uh, he lives in Atlanta now. A lot of people had questions over the years, why, uh, the, the ceremonies are being held at O D U? As opposed to somewhere here in, in the city of Portsmouth, uh, like it was at one point.
Yeah, uh, yeah. Good morning to Mr. Van as well. I went to school with his, with his daughter Winter, so, and I remember Norfolk State as well, so.
Don't try to age us, talking about who you went to school with, Cardale.
Well, Mr. Van, I'm, I'm only seventeen, so I'm gonna put, I don't push y'all.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
We're twenty-one.
But, um, you know, originally we were having the graduations in Portsmouth. Um, at the Antello's Pavilion, that was really the only space we had available after Willie Hall, um, stopped hosting the graduations. Uh, there, there are a lot of things that, uh, we listened, we did surveys for the community, for the parents. And the surveys overwhelmingly, uh, chose for us to move it to Chartway Arena, at that time, to the Conference Center. There were a few things. One was the weather. Um, June, middle of June is normally extremely hot. We had some medical emergencies where people were, uh, were fainting and passing out due to the heat and heat exhaustion. We had a couple of students that were getting sick every year because of that waiting, uh, for graduation. Another thing, uh, rain, another weather, uh, issues, uh, would cause issues and delays with the graduation at times. And cost, it, it was more cost effective, uh, for us to move it. And another thing with being so many parents, everyone wants to see their child, but everyone can't sit up front. By having it at Chartway Arena, we were able to have big screens, you could see your child up close when they walk across the stage, when their name was called. So I think for all those reasons is why the community and the parents, uh, voted overwhelmingly for us to move it to Chartway. And we can have all the ceremonies in one day. Before we had them stretched throughout the week, three different days, which made it, uh, easily accessible now, uh, for staff. Who, who are actually off, uh, so, in some cases during that time to actually attend all three graduations and see their students, uh, participate.
Thank you for asking. And I guess that's why I saw, and I, I don't want this to be a political statement, but I think it's so important for people to remember. That a part of the casino stages is gonna be a performing arts, uh, center. And whether you believe in the casino or not, we need, uh, that kind of center here. Uh, so, uh, just keep that in mind, that, that's a part of the stages of that, of that, whether you agree with the casino or not. We, we need something here in the city of Portsmouth so people can, can walk and be, who are the rest.
Yeah, and, and with that being said, I mean, that, that's absolutely true because, you know, uh, the, the arts are a huge, um, component of our school division. But we, we have to go to Norfolk and other places in order for our students, you know, to perform and to engage. So we most definitely need our own performing arts center here in Portsmouth. And again, no matter which side of the aisle you stand on with the casino, I always look at it from a student-first perspective. And, and there are many things our students miss out on because we don't have the adequate facilities here in our city. So to get the opportunity to do that would be major for them.
That was the next question I was gonna ask you about performing arts, because that does help the child to develop into a whole, a whole person. You know, it gives them those things that they need to help them to leap to the next level. So I'm glad to see the focus will be also on the, um, performing arts. Because you said you're putting more music teachers into the schools.
Absolutely.
Uh, what about the art teachers and the? Drama? What happened to drama in the schools, you know? Uh, where are we with the, uh, performing arts piece?
Uh, we, we actually, we still do, uh, uh, dance and drama. Uh, right now, I know we have a great teacher. You should go check her out at Churchland High School. Her name is Janelle Jones and she is.
Yes, yes, she is.
Uh, go, go, go over one day and check out her class when we open back up. I think you all will be extremely impressed, uh, with her and also with our students. And that, that's another issue that, um, I'm tackling also as chairman, that's the equity issue.
Yes.
Um, we, I, I sit on the board, the regional board for the Governor's School of Arts. But when you look at the, the participation by African American and minority students, it's extremely low. Um, and Portsmouth, we're not the lowest, but we're, I think maybe one of the, the bottom four as far as participation for students in the program. And a lot of that has to do with equity and the, uh, they don't have access to the same resources, to the same classes. You have some students in other communities that are studying dance, starting at the age of three and four, when many of our families, they can't afford that. So, uh, what can we do and what do we do, uh, to make that accessible to them? And that's something that we're working on now as well. The Doctor Bracy's working thoroughly on to see how we can possibly make that happen. And we're not doing it alone. We're working with other school divisions to see what we can do together collectively, uh, to make them more accessible to our students, especially those of lower income. And how, how we make, can we make that happen?
Well, one thing right quick is that, uh, we talked about the floor and funding. Uh, so at this point in, in the, uh, show, I'd like to say is for those who are out there that like what you're seeing and hearing. Uh, we at Portsmouth Coffee Talk also are looking at funding so we can expand these type of programs. And so if you'd like to, uh, participate as a sponsor or send a donation, you can send it to Portsmouth Coffee Talk. At P O Box seven six six four, Portsmouth, Virginia, two three seven oh seven. And your future help, uh, will help us so that we can help you.
Right.
That was a, uh, segue, Colonel. You're getting real professional at this, man. I got to.
You have to remind him, James. Good job, Colonel. Proud of you.
That segue was so smooth, you know, the funding from school to. That segue was so smooth, you know, the funding from school to us. Anyway, uh, Cardale, uh, uh, Leah mentioning about the arts and things like that and 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 a lot of people don't realize. Cause as I was going over some information last night, how many of our students are are excelling in these things? E- even though some of them might have to go to Norfolk or something like that, the Governor's School of Arts and and things like that, uh. With the program, the robotics program, which is not, you know, I guess. The code uh, COVID sort of slowed that up. But it's so many things that our students are doing and so many awards that they are getting and being recognized for that people don't know about. You know, and and like to always say, when we had uh, Klu Akerson on the Vice Chair of the Board. Uh, we were talking about how people don't know, we we hear more about the negative things out there. But we don't know how these kids, even during the pandemic, how well they were excelling in different areas. And well, it's a part, we are committed to try to, you know, uh, let people know about those things. And I was asking uh, the Vice Mayor too, Vice Mayor, the Vice Chair. About, you know, what the school system is doing to make sure the public is aware of what these children are doing, or what these students are doing. And how they're achieving and and uh, you know, going on to the next level and representing the school system. All over the country.
Yeah, and um, and our communication director, Lauren Ruskell, she's doing a great job. Uh, and her staff with our Facebook and social media Twitter pages, because they're putting a lot of student achievements up there as well. And one thing I did when I became Chair is I actually, I kind of changed the way we uh, conduct our agenda. I mean, it's a lot shorter now. But I I move a lot of the business. Uh, things that are repetitive to a consent agenda. So we we honor more students every meeting now. So the last meeting. We honored about, I believe, ten or eleven students to just talk about their achievements and what they're doing. You know, we have students, we have students that are going to Broadway and and who are directing and writing plays. That we don't, we don't ever hear about. So we honor some of those. We have students that are that are winning national spelling bees and kind of poet laureates, you know. Uh, and being recognized as a poet laureate. So we have a lot of students doing great things within the city. And we're gonna make sure we start promoting them more, not only during our meetings, but also on social media. And Lauren, where she puts out her emails to all parents and staff, she includes those things. And the highlights. And she's pushing them to news stations so they can tell our story. Uh, Portsmouth, we have some of the most amazing students uh, in the country and willingness to say who are doing great things. We just need to put the information out there.
Yeah, and I would encourage people that to watch the school board meetings that uh, maybe shy away because they don't want to sit through the policy things. You say you're showing the means, but if you watch in the beginning of every meeting or if you attend since it's opening back up. Uh, you'll see some amazing things that our students are doing. It's very encouraging. It always disheartens me when I hear people out in the communities talking about, you know, putting the putting the system down and not knowing. That our 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 students are are excelling and can't do anything but get better with the, you know, proper funding that we have and. And the commitment of the school board and the parents and the teachers and everybody involved. So. Uh, I'm glad to hear that, that, you know, that. That information is being put out there and I just want the people to be aware, you know, make sure you pay attention to what's going on before you get out here. You know, talking about something you're not aware of, you know, so I appreciate.
And you know, and I I presented last week, a week before last. Uh, to our statewide association on a program we were doing here in Portsmouth. They wanted us to pre- to present about it. So uh, you have others, other school divisions across the Commonwealth who are looking at Portsmouth and some of the things that we're doing. So they can implement those things. And um, I believe that says a lot, you know, for all the negative that you hear. Uh, there are divisions across the Commonwealth who are looking at Portsmouth to say, okay, these things we can make happen for our students and for our families that they're doing there. So. I think that's a great thing. And Dr. Bracy is doing a tremendous job. He's being recognized on a state level and national level. So we we have a great superintendent. We do.
James, as well as highlighting the students, what are we doing to highlight? You have some amazing teachers out there as well. What are we doing to highlight those amazing teachers? Those teachers who go one step beyond what's required of them?
Right. Outside of of your normal Teacher of the Year ceremonies, uh, the schools individually, they're recognizing. Uh, teachers now, if not monthly, quarterly. And Dr. Bracy, he's getting, he's gonna be getting ideas from his teacher advisory committee. On what they can do to highlight teachers more and to also increase morale in the school division. So. We just started an advisory committee with our Transportation Department. And they're gonna be recognizing drivers monthly and quarterly and and members of that staff. And Dr. Bracy is now gonna start getting input from his teacher advisory committee on how we can also recognize them more as well.
Wonderful.
And I must say also that uh, I'll go back to elections matter and who you vote for and who you put on the school board because. I think, you know, and and the school board members are accessible and you don't be afraid to give your suggestions to them. I think that that's why we have, we had a state commission put together to uh, bring in and implement African-American studies in our school. Which is important for our school system since, because of our our African-American uh, percentage in the schools. And I think uh, it's something starting in Ascot North. Is that starting this fall?
Well, uh, we we actually just completed the pilot program for to Ascot North High School. So the governor, he formulated his commission. Uh, to look at this uh, this curriculum. And Portsmouth was chosen as one of the pilot school divisions, again, uh, recognizing uh, the resources we have in Portsmouth as far as our teachers and our staff. Uh, Mr. Miles Bond, who's a teacher at Ascot North High School, he led the pilot program. For the course, and it went phenomenally well. So we're excited. So now starting this fall. It's gonna be open at all three high schools for all high school students. And it's an elective course. So it hasn't been mandated yet by the Department of Education. It's still an elective. But all of our students have an opportunity to take it um, while they're in high school.
Good, excellent.
So that people uh, participate in it so we can make sure. And it like any pilot program, if if it doesn't show success, it'll go away. So it's very important that people. Uh, even though it's not required yet, to uh, take that elective, make sure the interest is shown. And it can continue and probably go up to the level of of being a requirement, which I think is important for it to be. For all our students to know uh, the history, the history of locally and uh, globally.
I mean, absolutely, it's uh, just me personally, you know, my parents taught me a lot about uh, local Portsmouth history as much as they could. Uh, growing up, which many students don't have that opportunity as well. But uh, I didn't learn as much as I did about African-American history. I got to college. And that was benefit, not not putting one college over the next, but it was a benefit of going to HBC.
But you went, but you went to the best HBCU. You went to the best, okay? We got three NSU grads here, three NSU grads.
So uh, but 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 that was a benefit of uh, you know, a lot of times we try to steer our children away from HBCU, but. That's one of the benefits you get at HP, you don't get HP to get out of college. It 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 changed my perspective of of life and and service and always giving back. Because we have to give back to our own in order for it to be successful and be stronger.
Yes, Cordial. You know, do me a favor. Can you uh, address this? I uh, since Slim talked about the election season, which we are in. And there is a uh, a Republican lie about uh, race theory. And uh, what are we doing to combat that lie of a uh, of. A critical race theory versus American history?
Yeah, uh, uh, this question, we had the governor with us uh, last Friday, last last Friday at our uh. Virginia School Board Association Board Directors Meeting. And that question was asked, you know, what can we do locally? Uh, to combat combat was being said when it comes to teaching African-American history. And th- there really is no blanket answer for that, but I will say this. I would say that, and and this is my personal, not not a school board uh, answer, but personally, I believe that we we've put. How to say this? I believe white feelings above the black experience.
Exactly, exactly.
And um, uh, we, I think we're afraid to hurt feelings. When the truth is told about uh, the struggle that we've endured, not just as African-Americans, but also other uh, cultures and minorities as well. But really African-Americans, what we've experienced uh, as far as with the lack. Uh, of resources and equality and equity uh, in our country. America, yes, is the greatest country in the world, but there's more than just one side of history. In order for you to get a total perspective of what history really encompasses, you cannot negate the black experience. And 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 I believe by teaching the black experience to our own students. It will change their mindset as far as why they should work so hard and why. They should honor the women in their community, why they should honor their parents. Uh, those things need to be taught. That's why in other cultures, that's why they take care of their communities more and they. And they put more back into their schools and more back into their communities because they've always thought that. We weren't. You know, unless you had parents like like yours, I'm sure, and and mine, you learn those things, but the younger generations are are missing that.
And because they don't know, they don't know. They have no knowledge of it, you know?
Leah, let me step in.
James, and it goes along with the old African proverb. Can tell his story, the hunter will always be the conqueror. So it's important for us to learn our story so that we can tell our story.
All right, thank you. Hold it. Let me just step in because it's seven oh two and I want to end the uh, radio portion of the program. And I want to thank all the listeners on W G P L thirteen fifty AM for listening. And we will continue, uh, running Patil, Patillo, stay with us. And we will continue on the other side on Facebook Live. And uh, I I don't know if Leah wants to complete that uh, profound statements she was making there, but uh, we don't want to miss any part of it, but uh. Thank you for listening and uh, tune in next week. Uh, as we will be dealing with the radio listens, as we will be dealing with autism, autism. Uh, we will have some uh, great guests to enlighten us on that in the city of Portsmouth and and countrywide. Okay, we can go to a Facebook Live now. Leah, you want, I I think you got it in there, but uh.
But let me just get it in one more time, okay? And that's why I always take my Sancho for children. I used to take them to learn their history. And one of the things that was printed on the wall when we went to uh, the slave haven, it says. Until the lion can tell his story, the hunter will always be the conqueror. So until you know your history and you are able to tell your history, you you're forever lost. So you have to know your history so you can share your history with everyone else. But now with history, let's go on. I have a question about summer school.
Leah, before you go there, uh, for people that might have come on late, can you repeat uh, our student of?
I certainly can.
Since we were talking about hunting.
And I and I and I will put on my glasses this time so I can see, okay?
It'll make the world of difference, believe me.
This month, the Portsmouth Coffee Talk is extremely happy to say hats off to all twenty twenty-one graduates. Whether you're earning a diploma or a program certificate, your hard work deserves some warm, thoughtful words. Of recognition and encouragement. Portsmouth Coffee Talk would like to salute our first student during this graduation season. We're happy to salute Mr. Miles Hunt. Miles' parents are Edric and Christina Hunt. He attends Churchland High School. His favorite subject is anything history related. Some of the school activities that he's been a part of are the Latin Honor Society, the History Honor Society. Honor Society Foundation, Black Trucker Union, and more. As for community activities, he's the student representative to the Portsmouth City School Board. A charter member of the State Superintendent's African-American Superintendent's Advisory Committee. Former captain of the Portsmouth Police Explorers, et cetera. He will be attending Howard University with a major in political science. Portsmouth Coffee Talk congratulates Miles on your graduation. And we wish you the best for your next adventures. Congratulations, Mr. Miles Hunt, a student at Churchland High School. Cause I was reminded this morning that Wilson, Churchland, and Manor also put out some great people. Norfolk was not the only one, so. I was reminded of that this morning. So we're just so happy to salute Mr. Miles on this morning.
But I I'll always say there's a Norfolk graduate, we would, we wouldn't dare go out and say that we're bad to everyone else. We just recognize that we're second to none.
Get back to summer school because I have a lot of parents asking me about summer school, if it's gonna be virtually, is it gonna be in school? You know, just what's taking place with summer school? Cause our kids need it badly after this pandemic.
Yeah, but we're we're actually going um, a little bit further than above and beyond even our pre-COVID status when it comes to summer school. So summer school will be in person for uh, our. Uh, elementary students and before, even before the pandemic, we didn't do in-person. Uh, in-person for high school students, but uh, Dr. Bracy and staff, they're actually sending out surveys now to families to see if those students. Would be interested in coming in person uh, for summer school, because we know some of our students indeed need it. But if you add some of the principals at the high schools, you know, they're saying those kids in high school, they're actually preferring virtual. Uh, learning, especially for the summer, if that's gonna be offered for them. But we're sending the survey out anyway because we don't wanna. Let me sure all families have what they need, especially our students as they move forward in their educational journeys. So it will be in person as normal. For our our elementary uh, students and for the middle school and high school students, they're also um, offering that option.
And for those parents who choose during this next school year to continue with the virtual education, there is a program that they can go to. In order to have their children receive virtual education as well. Could you share that with us?
Yes, now the program uh, for virtual education uh, during the school year is not through Portsmouth Public Schools. It's through Virtual Virginia. So I encourage parents, before you make that decision to look at Virtual Virginia. Make sure is what your student needs. If they they need more uh, one-on-one attention from uh, educational staff. That may not be the option you want to go, but if your child's independent and they're flourishing. Uh, during the virtual platform, consider it. But uh, never negate the importance of of being in school, in person, and having the interaction. And the social emotional aspect is important too with students, just as much as their their educational learning. Sometimes students, they need to be around other students uh, to strengthen them, to to give them courage and. Uh, and to give them the the social skills they need to succeed as well. So uh, it's being offered through Virtual Virginia. Check it out. Make sure you you look at it thoroughly. Just know that the one-on-one attention they won't have. That it would normally get in the in-person.
Yes, but you know, Cordial, you know, there's a, you know, with this great debate on uh, between education being in-person and uh. And 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 under virtual learning, uh. It it brings us to the point that where we're now vaccinating those uh, the kids twelve and up. And I know that actually today, uh, they're giving vaccination at Grove Baptist Church. And uh, so there's a big debate on should our kids uh, get vaccinations? Even though the data has shown that we've had uh, thousands of kids. Within this six hundred and some thousand people died or kids that are dying and now the propensity, now the kids are getting sicker and sicker. Because their parents have listened to the, listened to those anti-vaxers. And 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 they're taking out their own kids. So I believe that uh, the FDA, actually Pfizer and Moderna have applied to the uh, FDA. For uh, to take uh, for, to make their vaccines normalize and off of the uh, emergency. Uh, proclamation. So then it will be a normal thing. So do you think that uh, and I know this is a crystal ball. Once this becomes off the emergency uh, status. Then it'll be a normal vaccine that might be required for our kids to go back to school. Have y'all started thinking about that? How are you gonna establish that? So the other point is, if you don't want to take it, stay stay home. Because you're endangering everybody else.
Yeah, it is definitely looking into a crystal ball with that, but uh, uh, we've been in constant communication with with Dr. James and. The Portsmouth Health Department on how vaccinations can possibly implemented uh, through the school division to students. Um, and I I think eventually, again, my personal uh, view on this is I believe that eventually it will become. As we do other routine vaccines for children to be able to come to school. Such as your polio and your chicken pox and your measles. Um, and you know, and we all have family members that have the, their theories on. Uh, why they shouldn't be vaccinated, you you get the. On being you or a special chip. And the truth is, the hesitation. And the truth is, the hesitation, and it goes back to our history again, the hesitation with many African Americans uh, go back to the Tuskegee Experience and what happened there, and that's their natural fear of the government doing something different with uh, with us. But I want everyone to know that that's received the education in in a school, especially Portsmouth. You've already received dozens of vaccination shots before you've entered into the school division. Um, right now, I think it's just such distrust between many of our citizens and the government. It it it's stirring a lot of the conspiracy theories, but uh, I believe eventually this vaccination process is going to be normal, which is like the other ones they take pre uh, uh, public education.
Well, you know, it's an important part. You mentioned the Tuskegee uh, Institute Studies. You know what? But when I question people that throw this out to me and I ask them in depth, what are you, what are you talking about?
They don't know.
They don't have a clue. Tuskegee uh, Institute Studies were, they don't have a clue. And so uh, it's just crazy to me. And now, and then if you look at it, politics, you know, we got twenty-nine governors across the country that uh, have rolled back voting rights and and uh, unemployment tech, uh, the the plus-ups. But they are actually working against the country and opening up this country. And so we have to combat that with the truth.
Right. Absolutely correct.
Cardell, by the way, anybody tuning in now, we we are here with the chairman of this Portsmouth School Board, Ca- Reverend Cardell Patillo Junior. And I have a question, um, uh, you know, it's been a challenge over the years as far as accreditation, the consistency of accreditation of our schools and and making sure that graduation rate is as high as it could be, or at least on the state level. Uh, and I know with the pandemic that last year was kind of hard to gauge that, but what plans are in place to make sure that the we uh, uh, reaching all our schools a hundred percent accreditation, for one thing, that's always the goal and and to improve our on-time graduation rate.
Yeah, um, if they look at the the history of, especially since I've been on the school board with our superintendent, the first thing we did when I was elected is we hired Dr. Bracy as our superintendent. Uh, since he's become our superintendent, accreditation has not gone down, it's continued to go up um, with the school division. We're not at a hundred percent as of yet, but that's always the goal. Uh, one of the key components of that, which we're actually working on now, in my personal opinion, is the RFP that we have out for rezoning uh, of our schools. That's going to be very important and critical. Um, and well, I'm very transparent. So basically, when this rezoning was done years ago, um, I believe the rezoning was done in an effort to protect certain areas and certain schools.
Right.
Um, and because of that, that's how you can have a Churchill Elementary and Churchill Academy that are fully accredited. Then the middle schools is where they struggle. When you go back to the high school, when Churchill isn't credited again. So you you must ask yourself, why is that? And that's because in the elementary school division, it's all neighborhood children at those schools. But when it comes to the middle school, is when you transport students from other areas uh, downtown up to the middle school, but then you take them away and send them back to Norcom for high school. Uh, so that there 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 are different zoning areas that we have that has also impacted uh, accreditation and and I don't think you want, they want to address it earlier, but it's being addressed now. Uh, that's that's a part of us, you know, dealing with this equity issue. Need to share the wealth of all of our students, all of our jewels within the school division to make sure that our schools are fairly populated to make sure we bring them all to accreditation standards. And even in the midst of dealing with that issue, our schools have still thrived and and schools that they felt would not be accredited at this time, they have been. Because of our teachers and because of our administrators. So uh, as a board, we have to do our part to make sure that we're standing on top of equity to make sure it's not as tough and as much of a struggle for our staff as it has been. And and we're going to do it and uh, we're going to get this rezoning done this, I think this year, uh, to make sure that happens. Uh, we're going to pour the adequate amount of funding into our schools. Sometimes you can't have a blanket amount of funds put out to each school because each school don't have, don't deal with the same issue.
Exactly.
And so, um, I I established a committee that is called the Equity Equity and Inclusion Committee. And that's what Dr. Whitaker, Ingrid Whitaker and Mr. Parent. Um, I wanted the committee to be diverse, but I also wanted the committee to deal with issues. And so right now, they're looking at the report that was put out by the uh, Committee on Schools and Challenging Environments from the Virginia School Board Association to deal with those issues of equity. I mean, I, all of our children deserve the same opportunities as every other student in the school division. So we're going to make sure that happens and that in turn will help us deal with accreditation to get us back to one hundred percent.
Yeah, thank you. You kind of answered my next question, uh, because doing my research, I saw and and I applaud Churchill High School, but I saw the many accolades that they got, uh, they even being named the best high school. Uh, and and I was wondering, how can one of our schools excel so well over the other schools, high schools, if everybody's supposed to be getting the same? You know, it just takes me back to another period when I was coming up, when it was when it wasn't quite equal, but we still excel.
Wasn't equal, right?
Well, and and I'll say, uh, two years ago, uh, Norcom and Wilson also achieved that status.
Yes.
It 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 just wasn't uh, promoted as much as we're promoting. Um, we're on top of our promotions now, of our school achievements, but again, even with the struggles of different individual schools, they have, they have still been thriving in their own individual ways, and that's to the to the credit of our teachers and our administrators and Dr. Bracy and his staff.
Yeah, we have to be on top of it because it doesn't help when it it's a fight that happens in every school and and the local media calls it a riot.
Exactly.
We have to be we're ahead of, ahead of the curve.
Right. But you know what, Cardell, I I'm going to take it a step further in what you just said. Uh, I boil it down to uh, and elections have uh, consequences. What you just talked about is a uh, what we call the systemic racism of the past that was set in policy. And with their policy, uh, proffered at certain schools. And so we have to call it out like it is. And I know you sort of did the political thing to say, hey, you're going to try to correct this thing, but I have to call it out like it is because I'm a shot caller and can do it. And so we have to use those words of saying that you're combating the past systemic racism what was put in policy by some folks that are no longer in office. And so, uh, yeah, so I I know you're shaking your head now. So uh, I know I I'm telling the truth, so I'm preaching the truth, the gospel now. Okay, go ahead.
You're definitely the shot caller, the dick baller.
So Cardell, a one question is being asked is about early childhood education. And I know that's where your heart is because that's where you are dealing with those babies. What are we doing with early childhood education in the city of Portsmouth? I know the Bright Start Program is in place.
Yeah, uh, the Bright Start Program is in place and our pre-K program, um, they're thriving. And that's another thing with Portsmouth, we're one of the few school divisions that we actually have individual pre-K centers that focus just on pre-K um, individually. And Dr. Bracy is also, we had discussions um, a couple of months ago. He's looking at how we can increase STEM offerings starting at pre-K. Uh, STEM offerings and coding all starting at pre-K. So those are things we're looking at now. Uh, and Miss uh, Yolanda Edmas Thomas, she has an extreme passion in a program for early childhood education. So uh, we're we're actually on the right foot with that. And we made increases to early childhood education every year in the school divisions. I've been on the school board and that's been the passion of many school board members to do so. But uh, if you go, if you have time, stop by uh, our pre-K centers and see what they're doing. They're doing some great things. There are children are already, I believe, ahead of the game as far as technology and what they're able to do. And as far as resources, uh, we uh, put new app, we're going to start replacing the iPads we originally gave them uh, with newer and updated Chromebooks, even as low as pre-K. So um, those are things we're doing actually right now before the new school year starts. We've already uh, received six thousand brand new Chromebooks here to replace the old ones for our, for our middle school students and high school students. And they're going to start filtering down to elementary and pre-K as well. So those things have already been uh, purchased and already been ordered and they're already here, so.
Well, with they are Cardell, we are in the preschools and so we get to work with each of your preschool uh, principals, and I must say that they are doing an amazing job as well. Hats off to them uh, as well. But let's share a little bit with us about the Starbase program.
Uh, Starbase is what we offer uh, to all, so all of our elementary students will have the opportunity to go to Starbase. Uh, I believe it's fourth grade for that. And with Starbase, they're getting hands-on uh, education when it comes to STEM and science. It's not just about building rockets, they're building rockets, but they're also doing navigation, they're also doing coding and other aspects of science that we learned nothing about when we were in school. So I'm excited, I'm excited about that. And Starbase is another focal point within our school division that other school divisions are looking at. Um, I presented with Dr. Bracy nationally at the National Conference on Education, uh, that was sponsored by uh, the American Association of School Superintendents. And we talked about Starbase. And to see other school divisions and their reactions across the country about what we were doing in Portsmouth with Starbase, I mean, it was astounding. So uh, again, those are the highlights about Portsmouth you don't always hear about. But our Starbase program is something that almost every school division in the Commonwealth is looking at because we provide the same opportunity for every elementary student uh, to participate in this program. It's not, other schools have it where certain students can take it uh, based on their academics or based on the classes they take. But in Portsmouth, every single elementary school student gets to participate in this STEM program and there's no cost.
Right.
You you know, Cardell, uh, I I always like to promote, you know, student creativity. You know, every every student can be a star basketball player as uh, some of us were. So uh, I think we had a
Because it wasn't James.
It 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 won't be that I was buying tickets going to the game, I won't play.
But uh, going to the, uh, talk about the creativity and things that uh, they don't normally do. Then we had a Norcom senior who was named a youth poet, uh, laureate. And you know, that's just falls in line with the half, the young lady that did the uh, read the poet at the presidential inauguration and and that's a feel, we have, you know, when when you talk about rapping, you have to look at that, those those people that do that, that write those things up, that's, that takes creativity as well. But this is a, you know, this this is something that you don't hear much about. But uh, it's probably a lot of uh, students throughout the system to have that creativity. And so recognizing her for her poetry, I I can imagine it's a lot of uh, children sitting home and 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 putting their thoughts down on paper.
Yes.
Gives them an opportunity. And also, I hope the the debate team continues.
Yes.
Because it used to be something that was pretty strong, uh, uh, during my day and often we have debating. We joked about those guys, but you couldn't out debate them because you learn, you know, the process of debating. And over the years, you know, we've seen movies about the debaters and things like that, how they took out uh, these big universities. And those things are important, so we have to make sure we highlight those things so students can say, oh, you know, uh, all these things upside down and right, you know, in my bedroom, maybe I can present it to the public and and no, tell them where that might take them. Like I said, not everybody's going to be a basketball star.
We we know, and 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 that's why I really, as you stated earlier, encourage uh, the community to please watch the meetings. I guarantee you that every meeting, you're going to see students being highlighted. Uh, what we do now, the reports that give you all the data and information that you you need as well, that's put in board documents and made public. So you still have that there and we let you know that it's there. But the time we spend now on live with the meetings, during that education report, we highlight our teachers and our students. And and that happens at every public meeting. So please uh, tune into the meeting so you can see that and see what our students are doing. Even the the logo we have, it's a new logo.
Yes.
Yeah, we had students who participated in a logo contest. And they worked with the professional graphic artists and students came up with our new logo. That 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 that's the kind of creativity we have in our school division. And when we we need to get to a point within our city, to where we start again, it needs to be a a a community effort because we have so so much creativity within our school division. We shouldn't have to go outside to accomplish a lot of things that we do in Portsmouth. If you look at the majority, this not being too political, but the majority of our contracts that go out from the school division and from the city, they go outside of our city. But we have students who are capable, who have entrepreneurial spirit spirits, who want to start their own companies, who in and by law, there's something called local preference. By law, you can have a local preference on contracts where you prefer local companies above the actual RFP process. So those are things I think we need, really need to look at and um, on a city level and a school level, because we have the talent here, right in our city. And students, they shouldn't be graduating from college, having to go to Atlanta or Charlotte to start the company they want to start, fulfill their dreams. We have those same needs right here in our own city.
And let me mention that uh, young girl's name, uh, Trinity Allen is her name. Lord Ambassador in the city of Portsmouth. And she was also the runner-up in Hampton Roads for for the Hampton Roads Contest. So uh, Trinity Allen is her name.
And she she was uh, supposed to be uh, recognized at the last meeting, but she had another engagement. So I believe she will be recognized at our next meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so we did it first.
Coffee Talk, put it out there first. But listen, I I and I think if I'm not mistaken, Brooke Archambro from Norcom is the teacher of the year?
Yes, she is. Uh, she's the teacher of the year. She's done a great job. Uh, she's a social studies teacher, so it does my favorite subject.
Yeah, mine as well.
She's one of the uh, huge group of amazing teachers we have uh, here in the school system, but congratulations to her.
Yes.
And I'd like to congratulate Mister Finney Smith, Norcom grad, who had a great season with the Dallas Mavericks.
Yeah.
I went down in the feed yesterday, it was just, you know, um, but he he contributed, he 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 put it in there. Get where they are. And one thing I like about this young man, he always comes back home and and contributes uh, to the communities, you know, so.
Program is coming back to Portsmouth, I think in August, uh, we'll be talking about on Coffee Talk before they actually implement the program, so. With your permission, co-host, with your permission, co-host. Yes.
Oh, I'll be glad to sell a basketball star on on.
So Cardell, I want to say that uh, you know, I have served on the Portsmouth School Board. And uh, it's just so refreshing having you as the chairperson as well as having those individuals who have been elected to serve on the school board. I like the fact that it seems to be a camaraderie there, you know, you have a lot of role players. And that was one of the problems we had when I was on, they after had to bring a mediator in to get people to work together. So it's really, it's really, it's really great to see this uh, camaraderie that's taking place with the school board, you all working together, trying to improve the Portsmouth Public School System. It's also great to see you working with the city and and getting things done. And as as small a city as Portsmouth is, we have to get to the point where we can work together. We can have differences, we can respect each other's differences. But the main thing is is that we come to a point that we come together and work as a team. And team work, we can make Portsmouth into this bright, and it's like Portsmouth Public Schools is the shining star. We can make Portsmouth City the bright and shining star within the seven cities. So I want to commend you, I want to commend each of the school board members because not only are they working with the school board, but they are doing things out in the community as well, which makes a difference. So I want to commend each of you for a job well done, job well done.
Yes.
Thank you. And and I'll say that uh, we do have a great team. And as you stated, we we don't always uh, take the same route to get to our destination, but we all have the same destination in mind. And and that's what's best for our students and for our families. And um, you know, I I think it's really the perfect example of how the city as a whole should really govern ourselves. Uh, we've elected a lot of, a lot of younger elected officials now on the school board. And um, but at the same time, we lean heavily upon those that have the experiences, been there.
One more time for me, please. Just say it one more time, just one more time, please.
Yeah, we we do, we we lean on those that have the experience because they've been there and done that. And and I'll tell you, uh, uh, one of the biggest blessings to me is being the chair is still. And I'll tell you, one of the biggest blessings to me is being the chair is still having Mr. Parent there to where I can call him and ask him questions or before I make a huge decision, I check with him, I check with Ms. Williams. I really check with everybody just to see, okay, this is not a one-man show. And what's going to work best for our school division. And one of the things Mr. Brishford told me about five years ago, I'll never forget. He says, you know, if you ever become chair, your job is not to control everything. He said, you set the tone, but your job is to keep the team together.
Right.
And that's what we're doing. We're really working as a team. And the committees, they're working hard. I mean, they're meeting monthly, every committee. From curriculum and instruction to operations, technology to CTE, they're meeting monthly with staff. Really hitting those issues that's important to our community. And that's what's important before. You know, we may have met twice a year in our committees, but now we're meeting monthly because we know that we have to get on the ball and do things. And do things that our citizens have been requiring, that our students need and our families deserve.
Well, Cordell, as we come to a close of the Portsmouth Coffee Talk session this week, I'd like to say I'm proud of you. I know your parents, I know your dad and your mother. I worked with your dad a lot in politics over the years. You know, he was strong in politics, so I'm not surprised that you're a shining light. And funny I say that because the image of you when I'm sitting up there is like an array of light coming from your head. So that sort of fits. So I want to thank you and want to know if you have any last parting words for our Portsmouth Coffee Talk listeners as we move on.
Yeah, I just want to, again, I want to thank you all for what you continue to do, keeping the community informed because many of our citizens, they don't go to meetings. So this makes information really accessible to them at their fingertips. So I want to thank you all for that. And also, I really want to stress the importance of our community getting involved with our students and with our school division. I know that one person can't do it all, but if you could take the time just to mentor one or two children, that would make a huge impact on our city as a whole. And not just mentor them for a season, but mentor them for a lifetime through their educational journey, through their careers. And you'll be surprised the difference you alone could make through your life of one or two children. So please, I just want to promote mentoring, looking at the crime and the hurt that our families are experiencing now. Is our time as a community to step up more and be more involved with our children.
And I'll just say, you mentioned the community and I will encourage the people attend and pack these concerts that the orchestra has, the band has, the pool titles, all the things, it's like you pack the football games and the basketball gyms. Pack these, you know, encourage these students in these other areas, you know, don't let them come out there to perform and it's two or three people sitting out there in the audience. They deserve the same recognition and, you know, attention that all the other extracurricular activities get. So it's up to us as a community to make sure we encourage these students. The more we encourage them, I think the better off we'll be and the better people they'll be in life. So. That's just my two cents on that. Host, do you have any last words you'd like to say before we close out?
I'd like to say, if you have missed any of the episodes of Portsmouth Coffee Talk or if you'd like to go back and revisit some of the episodes of Portsmouth Coffee Talk, please go to our YouTube page, Portsmouth Coffee Talk, and we need you to like and subscribe. Please subscribe to our YouTube page. We need your subscription, please. And I just want to thank Cordell for the, and thank you for coming on. Thank you for sharing and thank you for the great job that you're doing as well. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And the rest of the school board members.
Yes, all of the school board members. They're a team. They're one.
We are.
That's right.
And I'd like to say, Cordell, keep doing what you're doing. Keep representing and keep telling the truth.
Amen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chapman.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for watching Portsmouth Coffee Talk this morning. And as I mentioned earlier.
Phil Thomas, say hello, Mr. Chapman, please.
I sure will. I sure will.
As I mentioned before, next week, we'll be dealing with the topic of autism. And please tune in for that. It's a lot of good information is going to come from that, some things that you really need to know. And hopefully we can dispel some myths or misconceptions about autism in children and the families that deal with that. So thanks again. Take care. And remember, Portsmouth Coffee Talk is here to share our voice.
Our community.
And our future.
Thank you. God bless you and take care.
God bless. God bless. Take care.